Evening. I'd like to call this Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting Tuesday, August 3rd to order. We have a number of items on the agenda this evening, so we'll get right to it. Under "New Business," item number one on the agenda is a Site Plan Review Application 044 by Big Creek Veterinary Hospital Land Holdings LLC for a proposed building addition located at 11743 Gerlach Road. We have a revised staff report. Everything's in order. We have all the information here. We have quite a bit of documentation and everything. So what I'd like to do is call the applicant to the podium, introduce yourself. Please state your name and address for the record, and then feel free to give us your presentation. Do you need an easel or anything?
No, you have the information right in front of you.
Okay.
My name is Larry Klein. I'm the representative for the owners of Big Creek Veterinary Hospital. 10640 Windtree Drive, Concord, Ohio is my address.
Okay.
As you see, we're proposing to add four exam rooms onto the east side of the building and a separate exit onto the west side of the building. It's pretty straightforward, actually. We learned during COVID that having separate entrance and exits really helped keep people separated, as well as the pets. You have a German Shepherd and a little small dog trying to go in and out at the same time. Everybody has to wait and stay back. So the idea of having a separate entrance came to light. That's why we used exits.
Any additional information you'd like to provide the board at this point?
I don't think so unless you need it.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions for the gentleman? Kyra?
Dr. Fu Kavitz.
Okay, please indulge.
In the form, it states that you should provide why the proposed site plan is being developed. You're doing this because of increased traffic?
The need for efficiency within the hospital is why they want to add the exam rooms. They're not adding employees, but they want to be able to bring more clients into the exam rooms rather than wait in the waiting room. They can see more people at the end of the day now rather than waiting there.
In looking through the septic inspections, a lot of them say, is the wiring diagram in the control panel? Let's check no all the way through. Can we get the wiring diagram in the control panel?
Sure.
Okay, it's not that big of a deal.
I have no idea why it's not in.
Well, I don't either.
It was built 12 years ago, so maybe somebody removed it. I have no idea.
And then the Lake County General Health District comments was, add screws to the tank lids during next service.
Okay.
Okay, so let's get on Lake County General Health. Now, the last one is mostly, probably the one most important. On your A0.1 diagram, where you show the addition and the separate exit, it shows an Egress arrow to come out the entrance. I just questioned it. You made a separate exit. Why don't we utilize that exit to go out?
That is the intent. What it says on the drawings, I'm not...
But yet, I really didn't see a clear path to go out. The interior exam rooms to go out the exit plus... I'm sure you don't figure it out, but I just wanted to make sure you're aware.
What sheet?
That's fire.
A0.1.
That's a fire exit. That's a fire plan.
That's a fire plan.
That's in case of emergency.
Okay, so you can go out any place, any way you can.
In case of emergency, you can go out any which way you can. But the dedicated exit is going to be through the north new vestibule. I'm sorry, the west.
The west, okay.
That's going to be the dedicated exit. So what you're looking at is a fire code plan.
Tell me that.
Says first floor code plan.
Okay, all right. I'm good.
Thank you. Frank, any questions?
Just long as I know you're going to meet all the requirements that the engineers in Lake County require you and to tell you.
Oh, of course.
There hasn't been any discrepancies or anything that could make you feel uncomfortable.
No, no. It's a pretty straightforward, simple project.
I figured it wouldn't be since it's already been built already and you just handed to it.
We were the original contractors to build the building, so we know it very well.
Gotcha.
And they were actually my veterinarian when I had dogs, so I've been there multiple times. Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Eifelies?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Like you said, it's fairly straightforward. My only comment is just an observation. The grade drops off on the west side with building addition number two. You don't envision any type of retaining wall?
No, it doesn't drop off until you get towards the detention pond, yeah, towards the north.
I thought so.
The area up front where we're putting the new vestibule is actually pretty flat. The only thing we're going to disturb is one beech tree that's there. Re-landscaped after.
That was it, Mr. Chairman. It's fairly straightforward.
Mr. Peterson?
Everything looks fine to me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Yeah, looking at the staff report, it's a pretty clean staff report. I don't see a whole lot of comments. I don't see any conditions or anything else like that. At this point, the staff recommends approval of the site plan review application. Lake County Stormwater Management Department did submit an email dated July 22nd of 2021. They noted a couple of items on there, but from your comments, I understand that you have no problem meeting those requirements and taking care of that stuff. So I don't think we have any other questions at this point. We appreciate you coming up and making your presentation as brief as it was. Thank you very much. Yep. Any discussion on the board on this application? No. Okay, at this point, I would entertain a motion to the affirmative for the site plan review application.
Mr. Chairman, I could make a motion. We conditionally approve the application 044 as presented.
Excuse me, Mr. Peterson. Not a conditional approval, but staff is recommending.
Not subject to trustees?
No, this does not go to the trustees.
Okay, then I'll bend that. Full approval.
Okay.
As presented.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Heather, would you call the role, please?
Yes. Mr. Robert?
Aye.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Ligenfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Eifelies?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, we have five ayes, no nays, no abstentions. Motion passes, and the approval's been granted. Thank you for coming in. Appreciate your time. It was nice to have a nice, clean presentation.
Thank you.
Not a lot of discussion. That's very helpful. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nice job.
Okay, moving on. Item number two on the agenda under "New Business" is a Site Plan Review Application 045 by Accurate Landscaping, Inc. for a proposed new building located at 7291 Ravenna Road. Is the applicant present? Okay, would you like to come up to the podium, sir? Please state your name and address for the record, and please feel free to give us your presentation.
Name is Tim Jackson. Address is 7290 Ravenna Road. And I'm the owner of Accurate Landscaping.
Okay.
I guess as far as the presentation is, we're looking to be able to warehouse our equipment that we have. Through the years, we've expanded a little bit, and it's time to put everything under doors or under roof. Getting older and don't want to fight the winters no more, to be truthful. The office building that we currently use as the office building will be removed, and we're going to build new offices in the new building. I guess other than that, I don't know what else to say.
Would you like, did you see the revised staff report?
Yeah.
Okay, would you care to address some of the issues? Because we've got a number of comments and stipulations and some conditions and things of that nature from a number of entities. So if you could please respond to those, that would be helpful.
Okay, so it says revised, the architectural plans. On page, there is a wall for the first one. It's the lighting plan. On page, there is a lighting plan in here. On E1, it shows a lighting plan of, on exterior lights, there'll be a light at the top of each main door, and then in the rear to match. There'll be three lights in the rear, two on the south side and two on the north side.
Okay. So let me help you out with the zoning staff comments. We'll just run these right down the list, okay? We'll address each one.
I'm new to all this, man.
Right, and then you go ahead.
First and last time I'll ever do this.
I don't want you to struggle and I don't want you to kind of sift through the stuff.
I got you.
We'll go right to it and kind of run through this. Under the zoning staff comments, which is section number two of the staff report, under the question, does the project meet the site plan review criteria outlined in section 36? Boy, my Roman numerals are still there. How about that? Feel pretty good about that. My grandson would be impressed. Item number one, data blocks shall be updated to include number of buildings, number of stories, proposed uses, building spacing, and parking area. You okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Item number two, revise architectural plans to show the height of the wall-mounted lights on the building. Maximum height allowed for lights on buildings with height of less than 50 feet is 14 feet. A detailed specification sheet for the wall-mounted lights shall be submitted. You okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Number three, show traffic flow pattern on the site plan.
That one is challenging. I guess we only have three employees. Well, we have six employees total, but three job report every day. Three go to the shop. And to make a traffic pattern, do we just make one up? Because there's three trucks that come in and three trucks that go out. You know, it's not like we're, I don't know, a Walgreens where there's going to be a flow pattern. Because there's really not a flow pattern to it, if that makes sense.
Heather, could you give him a little bit of guidance on what maybe he needs to do to comply with that?
Sure. I guess like at each point of ingress, egress, is it the intention, you know, for it to be in and out traffic? You know, just have your engineer or your surveyor show, you know, on the plan, you know, if it's in and out with arrows, you know, and...
Because there wouldn't be like, it would be like we came in on the south and go out the north.
Right, so that's what we want to see on the plan is how the traffic would have come onto the property.
Yeah, I think if you were to probably run this by your architect, I'm sure you probably...
They did a traffic study just to make sure we could turn our semis around.
Right.
That was the main thing. Before, we used to back in and off the road.
Right.
So if it was between 3:00 and 6:00 o'clock, you were crossing your fingers, hitting the stoplight, making sure no one was coming southbound.
Right.
You know, so the whole point of this moving the bins to the back is we'll be able to come in north and south, turn around back there and park instead of having to back in off the road.
Okay. Have a conversation with your architect and the drawings to make sure that we can get a specific, and I'm sure he understands what he needs to do. Make sure that's added to your plan.
Okay.
Okay. Label access drive width on the site plan. You okay with that?
Yep.
All right. Show the existing sign location on the plan. You okay with that?
Yeah, now, my question for that one would be, before I started all this, it used to be two parcels, 7291 and 7295. I have joined them to meet the zoning requirements as far as setbacks and that. And at this time, we had two signs because there's two parcels. So how would that work? Right now, we don't have a sign plan.
How many signs are up currently?
Two.
They're both up? I thought one of them was down.
Well, if you combine the parcels together, do you need two signs? Would one be sufficient?
It doesn't, I mean, I'm just asking how you would want it. It doesn't really matter. Because at this time, I don't know that we're going to do any signs.
Publicizing your company?
No, probably no signs right now.
So you're making changes to the signs or you're just leaving them as is?
As is for now.
So show us where they are on the site.
Yep. You okay with that?
Yep.
All right, you taking notes?
Yeah.
Good. All right. Number six, the overhead doors for the proposed building shall be shown on the site plan.
Okay.
Okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right. And number seven, revise construction timeline to include all aspects of the project, including but not limited to demolition of existing building and installation of landscaping. Are you able to provide a timeline for that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Now, a question for that would be, so we're going to start hopefully in a couple weeks to build a new one. They're telling us that we should be done through end of winter. You know, the building should be done by November 15th, and then the balance of inside. As far as demolition of that building, we don't want to do the demolition until obviously we're in the new one. If there is a time, you know, should I give myself more than adequate time, or is it a timeline that's pretty stringent that it's got to be within a couple weeks? I just want to make sure that I'm not having to ask for forgiveness later. You know, I just want to make sure I give enough. Is there a time restriction?
There's some restrictions on, you know, when the landscaping has to be installed upon completion of the project. So I mean, the time, obviously, we understand that things can change as far as the timing of your project, but we need to have an understanding of what your intentions are.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Since you're in the landscaping business, I think that should be pretty easy.
You should be able to figure this part out.
Right. Okay. Then the next item is, does the project comply with the applicable landscaping and screening criteria outlined in section 38? And the number one item is revised landscape plan to match civil layout, remove south bins, and adjust landscaping plan as required to show lawn in this area.
Absolutely.
Okay with that?
Yep.
All right. Number two, revised landscape plan to show grass to be planted north of the relocated bins and gravel parking area in addition to the tree shown.
Absolutely.
Okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right. We're quick and thorough. All right, under the, in section three, comments from other departments and/or agencies, Lake County Stormwater Management Department, Stephen Hauser, dated July 23rd, 2021. Item number one, bullet point is, please distinguish the proposed work zone and proposed disturbance areas. As a disturbance area greater than one acre will require NOI coverage and NPDES construction general permit compliance.
Yeah, that's...
You okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right. You understand with all those?
Yeah. So there was one, the reason some of these drawings don't coincide is there's, to get the zoning, the last zoning meeting, the civil had changed, and that's why some of this stuff, the civil and the landscape didn't all line up. And in this particular one, there was a sheet in here that we were under the one acre. But yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay, so we're good with the first bullet point. Okay, second bullet point, to provide more detailed grading on the plan to show how water will be conveyed to the proposed catch basin structures and that there will be positive fallaway from the building foundation.
Right.
Okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Bullet point number three, concern with the pond's outlet pipe being located underneath the stormwater basin embankment and the possibility of water circumventing the pond through trench migration. You familiar with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, we're fixing that? Okay. Next bullet point, provide or recommend anti-seep collar or collars along the pond's outlet pipe to reduce the risk of piping.
Yep.
Okay.
Let me ask, does anybody know what piping is?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a typographical error. It's meant to say, I assume, leak, leaking, not piping, leaking. It's, anti-seep collar is to prevent leaking.
Right.
Okay, right. I just questioned because I didn't know what piping was in that context.
It depends on what vernacular.
Well, I was trying to find the vernacular.
All right, so we'll make a note that the piping is questioned, and we're thinking that that could be a typo, and we're going to assume leaking. So we might want to get a clarification on that. The next bullet point, provide emergency spillways' conveyance ability due to the close proximity and proposed grade of the back of the building.
Yep.
Good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Next item is storm sewer system to be sized per county standards.
Yes.
Okay. Next item is to recommend alternative outlet design to reduce risk of gravel and perforated pipe from clogging.
Yes.
Okay. Next item is the 12-inch outlet pipe form, the site functioning, I'm going to assume from, question mark, has it been inspected to determine if it can adequately convey the proposed volumes of water from the basin?
That was done by the city.
Okay.
They did that last year.
So that's been completed?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. No, good to know. Next item, storm sewers or downspouts discharging into the basin should have specified volumes and adequately sized rock outlet protection to dissipate velocity and minimize erosion.
Yes.
Okay. And the final bullet point is, if the basin is to function as a sediment trap throughout construction, then a skimmer device shall be installed to de-water the sediment laden water in the pond.
It will not be a sediment trap.
It will not be?
No, not through construction. It'll be siltside.
Okay, so we'll make a note on that. Great. The next entity and agency to make a comment is the Concord Township Fire Department, Doug Roth, July 27, 2021. After review of the construction, site plan is permitted by the 2017 Ohio Fire Code, Section 104.2.1. Concord Township Fire Department will provide the Concord Township Zoning Department, specific references to the relevant sections of this code to be in compliance. OFC Section 503.1.1, buildings and facilities, approved fire apparatus access roads shall be provided for every facility, building, or portion of a building hereafter constructed or moved into or within jurisdiction which are not readily accessible from a public and/or private street. The fire apparatus access road shall comply with the requirements of this paragraph and shall extend to within 150 feet of all portions of the facility and all portions of the exterior walls of the first story of the building as measured by an approved route around the exterior of the building and/or facility. On exceptions, the fire code official is authorized to increase the dimensions of 150 feet, which is 45,722 millimeters, where any of the following conditions occur. 1.1, the building is equipped throughout with an approved automatic sprinkler system installed in accordance with Paragraph C 3A I 903.3.1.1, C 3A I I 903.3.1.2, or C 3A I I I 903.1, or 903.3.1.3 of Rule 1301, colon 7, dash 709 of the Administrative Code. 1.2 is fire apparatus access roads cannot be installed because location of property, topography, waterways, non-negotiable grades, or other similar conditions, and approved alternative means of fire protection is provided. 1.3, there are not more than two group R3 or group U occupancies. Number two, where approved by the fire code official, fire apparatus access roads shall be permitted to be exempted or modified for solar, photovoltaic, power generation facilities. Fire department will authorize the reduction from 20 feet wide to 10 feet wide north side access due to exception 1.2. OFC Section 3301.1, fire safety during construction and demolition. This rule shall apply to structures in the course of construction, alteration, or demolition, including those in underground locations in compliance with NFPA 241 as listed in Rule 1301, colon 7, dash 7, dash 471, 1301, colon 7, dash 7, dash 80 of the Administrative Code is required for items not specifically addressed herein. Are you in compliance and understanding of those items?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the Lake County Engineers Office, Tracy Salkowicz, July 31, 2021. We have reviewed the site plan for the above referenced project and offer one comment for consideration. Since the property owner is proposing changes at the south entrance to the property, the existing driveway shall be modified to eliminate the encroachment onto the adjacent property to the south, Lake Geaga Recovery Centers, Inc. While the apron flare may encroach within the public right of way, no encroachment shall be permitted on the adjacent property outside of the right of way. Once revisions are made to the plans, our office will review again and issue final approval. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
All right. And under section four, staff recommendation, including conditions as appropriate. Staff recommends conditional approval subject to the following conditions. One, data block shall be updated to include number of buildings, number of stories, proposed uses, building spacing, and parking area. You okay with that? Okay. Number two, revise architectural plans to show the height of the wall-mounted lights on the building. A detailed specification sheet for the wall-mounted lights shall be submitted, showing compliance with the maximum 14 feet height.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Number three, show traffic flow pattern on site plan. You understand what that requires?
Yes.
Number four, label access drive width on the site plan.
Yes.
Show existing sign locations on plans.
Yes.
Item number six, the overhead doors for the proposed building shall be shown on the site plan.
Yes.
Already covered that. Number seven, revise construction timeline to include all aspects of the project, including but not limited to the demolition of existing building and installation of landscaping. We covered that. Plans must conform to the Lake County Stormwater Management Department as outlined above. You're okay with that?
Yes.
Number nine, the existing driveway shall be modified to eliminate the encroachment on the adjacent property, South of Lake Geaga Recovery Centers, Inc. You acknowledge that. Number 10, revised landscape plan to match civil layout, remove south bins, adjust landscaping plan as required to show lawn in this area. We talked about that. Number 11, revised landscape plan to show grass to be planted north of relocated bins and gravel parking area. We discussed that. And then, of course, on the exhibits, we had the site plan application and the various listed items on that, on the application. So everything is okay with you? You don't see any issues addressing those? As you know, if we read your approval, that these conditions and all these issues will need to be addressed as soon as we can get started, so we can make sure that everything is covered under the various departments and the questions and issues that they have brought to our attention.
So I just have... So I just have, I have the drawings redone and then I just resubmit them, correct?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'll send you a letter after this meeting.
Okay.
Right. If you have anything else you'd like to talk to the board at this point about?
No.
Okay. Any questions, Ira?
Do you anticipate any signage on the building itself?
On the building, no.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Schindler?
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Hypholies?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Evening.
Hi.
One question would be on the site plan. There's a notation that says the proposed storage on the north side gravel is uncovered.
Correct.
Is there a, is that to be, is there a detail somewhere?
There is not a detail. So when we got our okay to do this, at the last zoning meeting, there was only like a 30-hour window to get to the next, for you guys to get your information for this meeting. It will be basically where the topsoil bin that we have across the street now will be taken down and a new one of same stature, I believe it's 30 feet wide, will be put in its place.
Okay. Another observation is the mandor on the south side.
Okay.
Just an observation for you or your engineers on your use. The grade, the grade of that door is more than four feet above the grade outside. The retention basin is at 89. The finished grade outside is 93 and a half. Just an observation there for constructability because your detention basin is right up against the building all around.
Right.
So you have no room around there anyhow, as it may conflict with that mandor in front. Just again, observation. I didn't see the Lake County Engineers review that or note that.
Okay.
On the site.
Yeah. So your observations, we need a bunch of stepladders to get into the mandor?
So not quite a step ladder, as Mr. Chairman has noted, but just maybe a wall or something there to be aware of because the grading around there is right up against your building.
Yeah, but that grading comes back eight feet. So this grade continues throughout and it comes back eight feet before the retention basin starts.
I know what you're saying, but it's 93 and a half and that's 89. That distance is just an observation. The, is it your intent that the wash bay, so we have five parking spaces in front of the wash bay garage?
Correct.
So that...
Those, we need two parking spaces. We're just doing five to, I guess fulfill some zoning requirements, but there's only two people that park there. Right now, currently, if you see more cars out front, we have tenants. We have tenants on half the side of the building and those tenants will not be following us to the new location.
Okay. Is it with this improvement, are you anticipating relocating the stockpile of mulch and stone that's right up against the right-of-way?
In the road? No.
It will stay there?
Yes. Yeah, the bins on the south side and the north side will be pushed back, the ones out front remain as.
Okay, so that stockpile will remain. Have you had any issues with dust or especially dust, given the fact that it's proximity to the...
It's more dust on the gravel than it is, the stockpiles don't emit any dust. It's more of, it's more of truck traffic would be the dust.
Yeah. Also, since it's stockpiled and there's nothing protecting the washwater erosion of that...
Those are on concrete pads.
They're on pads, but I mean, where does that erode, where does the water drain off of those stockpiles?
Been there seven years and we haven't had that problem.
Okay. And then lastly, obviously, you received a variance to keep it gravel.
Correct.
Is that for a cost savings?
No, that's for, four of our machines are 80,000 pounds and are on steel tracks. We would turn a parking lot into gravel pretty quickly. If we paved it, you know, it would turn into, turn into gravel gradually. And plus the noise, the sheer noise of those things going on pavement, tinkling, 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 you know, it's aggressive.
Okay, I'm just, just a concern about the dust.
Great questions.
You think so?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
Is that it?
That's it?
Sure.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, looks like a good overall business improvement to me, no issues.
So I think you have no questions?
No.
Great. I have no questions, as long as you are under the understanding that you need to, you know, meet all of the conditions that have been set forth in the staff report. That's very important, obviously, if you've got a timeline you're trying to live under.
Yes.
You know, meeting these deadlines and getting this information back to others quickly as possible, getting everything revised accordingly is extremely important. I hate to see you get delayed. I'm with Mr. Peterson. I always like to see Concord businesses expand and grow and it's good for you and I'm glad that this is happening and that's, you know, I can't say anything more about that, so that's good for you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your willingness to stay in the township and grow with us instead of going elsewhere, so we like that. Any other questions from the board at this point? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your efforts. Any discussion from the board at this point? Anything we want to talk about or are we ready to move forward with a motion?
Motion.
Ira? No? Frank? Richard? Richard? Okay. All right. Well, at this point then, I would entertain a motion to the affirmative, however, we want to make sure that we note all of the conditions that have been set forth in the staff report, make sure you include that. So it's going to be a conditional approval based on all of the issues that are in the staff report and I'll entertain a motion at this point. Don't all jump at once.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to conditionally approve site plan review application number 045 by Accurate Landscaping, with consideration of all the comments from the staff report as provided by and revised on 8/2/2021.
Does that meet the legal requirements or do we need to hone that down a bit?
I'd rather get the conditions on the record. Just go, can you go through it, let's down one through 11?
All right, so you would, even though I covered those in the conversation with the applicant?
I'd like to put it out there.
Okay. Or be it for me to argue with legal counsel. Mr. Repert, can you please revise your motion and clear your throat?
You said one through 11?
Well, that was whatever it was.
Right? Yep, that's what, yeah, you need to, please.
I had nine.
And section four, oh, you have only nine?
Section four.
Section four, staff recommendations, including...
Section four, you want, okay.
Yes, if you could read those 11 points into your motion, I would appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we conditionally approve the site plan review application number 045 by Accurate Landscaping, Inc., with following staff recommendations, including conditions as appropriate. Number one, data blocks shall be updated to include number of buildings, number of stories, proposed uses, building spacing, and parking area. Number two, revise architectural plans to show the height of the wall-mounted lights on the building. A detailed specification sheet for the wall-mounted lights shall be submitted, showing compliance with the maximum 14-foot height. Number three, show traffic flow pattern on the site plan. Number four, legal access drive width on the site plan. Number five, show the existing sign locations on plans. Number six, the overhead doors for the proposed building shall be shown on the site plan. Number seven, revise construction timeline to include all aspects of the project, including but not limited to demolition of existing building and installation of landscaping. Number eight, plans must conform to the Lake County Stormwater Management Department as outlined above. Number nine, existing driveways shall be modified to eliminate the encroachment onto adjacent property to the south, which is Lake Geoga Recovery Centers, Inc. Number 10, revise landscape plan to match civil layout, parentheses, remove south bins and the parentheses, and adjust landscaping plan as required to show lawn in this area. Number 11, revise landscape plan to show grass to be planted north of relocated bins and gravel parking area in addition to the trees shown.
Thank you, Ira. May I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
You have a motion made and seconded. Heather, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repert?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hypholies?
Yes.
Mr. Leonfelter?
Yes.
Okay. The site plan review application has five yays, no nays, no abstentions, the motion, and the application is conditionally approved at this point. Thank you very much. Appreciate taking the time to come in. Okay. Now I know why there was such hesitancy on the board's part to make the motion.
To make the motion.
Ira jumped in. We got you. Okay.
See, if I do that, it can...
Wow, it was good. We appreciate it. We appreciate it. Don't think for a moment that we don't. All right. Item number three on the agenda this evening under new business is a work session for possible zoning text amendments related to the Residential Conservation Development District and outside dining.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You certainly may.
Can we discuss 13.33 outside dining first?
I would think that might make sense because I think it's a much shorter issue to deal with than the second. So why don't you go ahead and indulge us, discuss it if you'd like, or I could have Heather call?
Well, my discussion is, in all form, I don't think we should add a 25% or 30% or whatever it is. I think it's fine just the way it is. My note on the side says, please approve.
Heather, do you have any other comments for the board at this point, based on the information you've provided or with the red strike throughs on the relettering? I mean, everything okay?
Right, I think it sounded like the board had already kind of made their decision on that. It was just whether or not we wanted to initiate that as a separate zoning text amendment or possibly couple it with this, with the RCD amendments that we had been working on. So it's one small amendment. I don't know if you guys want to have a separate public hearing for that or if you want to wait, as I said, and couple it in with some other...
Counselor? Do you think would be appropriate or inappropriate to piggyback this along with the residential conservation zoning or do you think we should handle this as a separate public hearing with a separate agenda to discuss?
Either way, it sounds fine to me. I guess it depends on the timing that you guys want to do.
Okay. All right. So at this point, there's no further discussion from the board on the outside dining?
Well, I agree with Ira. This is a good improvement.
Okay. Frank, any comments?
I agree.
Okay. Rich?
I concur.
I concur.
You concur. Okay, great. So then I guess what we'll do at this point, since we're okay with everything, I think we should probably move forward with this to get this on the agenda for a public hearing. Correct? Heather? Get it on the agenda?
Yeah, what is... I'll need to grab my copy of the zoning resolutions to make sure that we're within, if we schedule the hearing, that we're within the ORC timeframe as far as the time period.
Sure.
Second.
Sure. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, the first Tuesday would be September 7.
Okay, so we would have to, upon the adoption of the motion by the zoning commission to initiate a text amendment, we would have to make sure that we set the hearing no less than 20 days or no more than 40 days from today. So I think if, counting on the calendar, does that work for our next regular scheduling?
Looking, glancing at my calendar, it appears that we are okay. Today being the 3rd, and then the next meeting would be the 7th of September, so that puts us within that...
Yeah, it's like 35 days.
Yeah, within that timeframe, so I think we're okay. All right, so why don't we, why don't we plan on trying to tackle that for the 7th zoning commission meeting?
So what I would recommend then, Mr. Chairman, is that we would need a motion, and I presented this evening to you in front of you a list of these potential amendments, just in case you guys are ready to initiate anything, that we'd be looking for a motion to, correct me, legal counsel here if need be, but to set a public hearing for a zoning text amendment to Section 13.33E outside dining to delete the existing requirements for outside seating capacity.
Okay. So at this point, gentlemen, I will entertain a motion?
Question?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if we want to piggyback this with the RCD, shouldn't we finalize the RCD?
Well, my thought is this, if we don't finalize the RCD this evening, I would still like to at least get this outside dining off our plate if possible. Okay, if we do get the residential conservation zoning text, you know, honed in and ready to go and we're comfortable moving forward, then I think we do them both at the next meeting, at least. I think this one is one that we can get out, we should get this on the agenda.
Okay.
Because I know we can tackle it and get it out of the way. And if we can finish up tonight and get the RCD text approved and then everybody's comfortable moving forward with the public hearing, then we'll do them both.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, it does.
I think we would take them in that order too. I think we would knock off the dining first, get it out of the way, and then move forward with the public, because I think there'll probably be some interest in the RCD text, maybe not, but I'm thinking there might be some interest in that and there might be some, an audience participation component to that from a public hearing. might be some, an audience participation component to that from a public hearing standpoint. So I would like to get the dining out of the way and that way, if we would have to continue the public hearing, that way at least the dining component will be out of the way.
Out of the way.
All the restaurateurs and business owners in the area that would be affected by that would at least have a clear understanding of where they're going with that. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We are very agreeable this evening. This is making my job very easy. Okay, so the outside dining that we're going to schedule for a public hearing, I would like, I would entertain a motion at this point for that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for section thirteen dot three-three revisions to outside dining requirements.
Okay, I have a motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-opposed? Abstentions? No abstentions. We have five ayes, no nays, no abstentions. We will be placing the outside dining text on the agenda next month for public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to, just for clarification purposes, are we going to just do that right at seven PM on the September seventh meeting?
You're going to put me under the guideline of specific times?
I believe that was the intention behind, you know, the motion.
Yes, it will be, I would like that to be the first item, the first item on the agenda for the, for the hearing, for our public hearing. I would like to get that out of the way first, tackle that, so we want to make sure that we don't get them superimposed. Although I can make the change, I have the ability to make the change at the time of the hearing. It's just, we'll make it a lot easier if we just do that first, okay?
Okay.
All right, now, let's go to the fun stuff. Plan unit development, residential conservation zoning. Heather, anything you'd like to talk to the board about today?
Okay, so last month, we went through, through a lot of this again. As you know, we've been working on some potential amendments for quite some time. And since then, I did meet with legal counsel to talk about a few pending items, and I think that we still need to make a couple modifications on this evening. One of them, I guess I point your attention to on page sixteen point one-eight.
Sixty, I'm sorry, sixteen what?
Sixteen point one-eight.
One-eight?
Yeah, sixteen point eighteen, which is actually section sixteen point two-four B, the open space minimum requirements. We have in here currently this proposed table showing minimum open space requirements based on, like a sliding scale based on the minimum project area. And I think for, you know, we talked about this a little bit last month about the potential for misuse based on the sliding scale where you might get a developer coming in with two smaller sized projects that then would only have to conserve thirty percent open space rather than the forty percent open space. I know we did a review of all of the previously approved RCD projects within the township. I don't think there was a, oh, I'm sorry, at that time, all of them had over forty percent, but it wasn't clear on each plan whether or not the forty percent open space included detention areas, excluded detention areas. And I know with this amendment, we are making it very clear that detention stormwater basins are not going to be counted as open space. So I think we need to factor that into this and come up with just a straight percentage and not do this sliding scale. So now, the most recent project that was not approved when we first started looking at this, which since then has been approved, was the Villas at Canterwood. And with detention basins, they were like at thirty-five percent. Without detention basins, they were teetering right at thirty percent. Okay, so, and I'm thinking that it would be better to just pick a percentage. I don't know if you guys want to split the difference between the thirty and the forty or go with the lower end or what, but I would really recommend that instead of doing the scale, that we just, we further change this just to say a straight percentage. So that's one of my comments, that I would highly recommend. The other area that there was some conversation about is when there's disturbances in the open space during construction or if there was land that was already previously disturbed being considered for an RCD, requiring the developer to submit some kind of restoration plan on how they're going to fix that area, whether it's been, you know, old farm fields potentially that now you want to have a better understanding of what they're going to do with that area as open space, if it's going to convert, go back, is it going to be converted back to forest or what they're going to do to that to improve that previously disturbed property. I had then, and this was one of the recommendations through the comp plan update in two thousand fifteen, that our Lake County Soil and Water was highly recommending that the township consider. In our discussions, it sounded like we really wanted to do that, and I was trying to get, you know, a very brief outline from Soil and Water to help assist, you know, to put in the zoning resolution, that these are the basic components of what we are expecting to see in a restoration plan. We have not received that yet, so I was trying to do some research myself online to kind of find some information. This afternoon, I know it was late, short notice, I did email over a study that was done by an individual at the Department of Plant Sciences, University of California, Davis, who just kind of had an upper level discussion about what restoration ecology really is, because I know that, and what that includes. I have a copy here, I can, for everybody if you guys want to see that, but I kind of went through, just explaining that what ecological restoration aims to do, basically recreating, accelerating the recovery of an ecosystem that has been previously disturbed. It talked about some different goals and objectives of different restoration projects. It really can vary from one project to another. I'm thinking like, you know, with an RCD where you might have some disturbances in the open space during construction, we'd be looking at, you know, the goal of that restoration project would probably be to regurgitate that area, but then there could be other, other projects that might have a more cumbersome, you know, restoration plan being proposed. But there are, so, and I know talking with legal counsel, they were also recommending that we include some basic items that we want to see in the plan. So I would think, I don't know if we want to kind of discuss a little bit more, what kind of things we would expect to see in that plan. I know, Mr. Heifelis, you and I were discussing this a little bit before the meeting started. I don't know if you want to add any, anything to that or?
I'd be glad to.
Please.
Yeah.
Chairman, so, I was mentioning Heather, I thank you for this. I read through it late this afternoon, and for, for my reference to, to the board here, if you go to application on page, the heading, on page two, at the bottom of page two, there are several bullets there that, from my read, provides us with an outline of what a restoration plan should include.
Right.
So I thought, I thought that was a general itemization that would help us identify what's to include in a restoration plan. While the article is more global in nature, this, this kind of speaks right to what I think would at least outline the main points that we would look for in a plan.
Were there any of those bullet points, Richard, that struck your fancy or you think we should include all of them or part of them?
I thought rehabilitating substrates was a little bit beyond, but basically, what is, assess the site, what is it? What's your goal for the site? What are the sources of disturbance? And how are you going to restore the vegetation? So it's kind of like outline generally to an applicant or a developer what, what we're looking for.
Heather, what would be the cost to the township and/or the developer associated with doing this type of a plan or conforming to these requirements? Does this become, is this something that the township is going to investigate and then make a recommendation? Or is this something that the developer is going to have to hire a restoration consultant and then, you know, put forth some sort of a proposal or plan? You know, because obviously, we're going to give them some guidelines, right? Because we're being requested to include some guidelines, and we just can't say, we want a restoration plan and have at it. You know, we've got to give them some, you know, some bogies, some things that they need to aim at, shoot at to be able to meet this. What's your thought there? Have you given that any thought?
Well, there would definitely be some cost involved with coming up with a restoration plan and what that cost might, the price of that, I think, would vary depending on, you know, the project. So if you're, for example, like the Villas at Canterwood project, if they're, right now, I mean, everything that they're proposing is basically on land that has not been previously disturbed. Now, as they move through their final improvements, if they see that they do need to disturb some of the open space, I think that restoration plan will be fairly straightforward to, to being formulated in-house, maybe even by an art, like a landscape architect. Yeah, a landscape architect could do that, which these developers generally have a relationship with a landscape architect or the surveyor engineering firm that they're working with has one on staff that could just go in and say, what was there right now? You know, what are we going to do when we disturb it and how can we regurgitate it? Maybe it's a very, it's similar to maybe the landscape plan requirement that we had in there before. However, then, on a different site, maybe we get this new RCD being proposed on a property that has been farmed for fifty years. Now, that kind of restoration plan would involve more cost and maybe a little bit more expertise. I don't know, just more thought to how, you know, what would be natural to the site prior to it being farmland. And so, taking a look at maybe what is adjacent to the farmland to get an idea of what was maybe there before it was farmed, and then coming up with a plan on how to either, I think actively convert that back to some other, you know, natural state, whether it's forest land or...
How far back do you go, though? I mean, this was once all forest.
Yeah.
A farm could be two hundred years old. Do we go back beyond that?
Well, first of all, I agree with Heather to answer Rich's question. That's the purpose of bullet number two. What is the project goal? What do you want to identify? And in my experience in our firm, this is ideally suited for a professional landscape architect. It is not extraordinary. It's not unusual. It's not a crazy cost. It is something that their professionals could...
So in your, in your opinion, in your professional opinion, you don't feel that this would put any undue financial stress or, you know, any sort of onerous requirement on the applicant or the developer?
No, I think it's in balance and in keeping with granting the RCD in first place.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That's my only concern.
Yep.
My only concern is what, you know, who's responsible? And then, is this going to be an expensive venture? Because do we, you know, I think, you know, you walk the fine line, you know, I mean, it's all well and good, intention, you know, the path, you know, the, what is the road to ruin is paid with good intentions, correct? So I mean, we want to make sure that we don't, you know, don't put such onerous task on the developer and then this becomes an issue that they don't want to be bothered with. You know, that's my concern. We want to promote this option, you know, not make it so overbearing that it becomes a non-option because of those requirements. That's my only concern of any of the RCD, you know, stipulations. I want to make sure that they're, but I don't want to put the bar so low that they just step across and march their way to, you know, march their merry way to an easy process. You know, obviously, we want to do some thinking, we want to stimulate, you know, their ideas and thought process and try to get the maximum use out of the open space if we can, but I don't want to do it to a point where it's all of a sudden, you don't want to do it.
Because you could have, especially here in Concord, you could have a lot of old farmland, and part of that could be the land that's going to remain open. It could be acres and acres, and are you asking the developer to replant a forest? You know, because it was once forest or what would we be asking? I mean, what are we restoring it to? What level?
Again, you...
Well, to Rich's point, and I don't know how, you know, you could get extreme, we want to have, you want like some a fact period on that? Or no?
No, I, I believe that's the purpose of formulating the goals, bullet number two. My suggestion, Mr. Chairman, is for, since Heather's been contacting with Lake Soil and Water, perhaps take these points and vet it with them for their advice or review as a, as a starting point to formulate some kind of criteria.
So do we want to review these application items and decide which ones we want to place in the, under, what would it be, sixteen?
Twelve, right?
Five goes back to...
Sixteen two-four.
Back, you just hear...
Two-four F.
Sixteen two-four.
F.
And then we would drop that to item F, under restoration plan. Do you want to, do you want to read through these bullet points and then, and try to see if you want to include some of these in that?
I would defer to the expertise of Lake Soil and Water to comment on that, so that we can, certainly we could comment, but really don't have the expertise, I believe, in something like this.
What are you saying?
I'm saying, vet this with Lake Soil and Water to see what they might suggest.
We need to stay in our mind.
Yes.
I'm happy to present this to Soil and Water to get their feedback on these items and come back with their opinion.
Now, the question then I have is that if we punt this to the Lake Soil and Water, okay, and let them take a look at this, can we have this in time for the public hearing? Is this something, you know what I'm saying? Because I see this as a, if we punt this now, then this is, you know, and we want to put this on the agenda for the September seventh, you know, regularly scheduled meeting, will we have this information and, you know, are we going to, would we deliberate this at the public hearing? Or, you know, if that's, I'm just thinking about the logistics of this.
Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to be firm going into the public hearing and not debate anything up here during the public hearing. We should have a united front.
Right. I agree. Would be awkward.
So that means September to October, if we get something back from Soil and Water.
This is why I wanted to make sure we got the dining, outside dining on the agenda. I had a funny feeling there might be a caveat, and if that's where it's ugly at. So, but I'm all, I'm in, just as a matter of record, I am all in total agreement with what you're saying. I think that would be the right idea to pass this off to the, you know, LSD and let them, you know, take a look at that, you know? So, I would give them that application section, Heather, and let them take a look at that and see what they think.
Okay.
And then see if we can develop some, some criteria to include into our item F, sixteen dot two-four.
I would agree that that's the best way to go is if we can get them to tell us from their professional standpoint. Do you, and maybe this is a question more for Soil and Water, too, but maybe do we need to clarify in here that the restoration plan should be developed by a professional land, you know, do we need to identify who is supposed to prepare that restoration plan, a landscape architect or some other professional?
Your turn, Richard.
Landscape architect.
Professionals or...
Licensed.
Licensed. Do we have a license? Yeah, we say that we want a license, that's the license.
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't limit it to that.
No?
No.
Okay, why?
Actually, yeah, second thought. Actually, yeah, second thought, I would agree because there could be a soil scientist involved, there could be a biologist involved in terms of this. Again, without talking to the experts at Lake Soil and Water, you know, to what degree do we identify here this criteria? So it could involve a variety of professionals, perhaps.
Is it possible that we give this suggestion to Soil and Water and ask them to come back and meet with us in two weeks? Can we have an off meeting to see what they say? Outside of...
What would be the compelling reason to do that?
Get this on the agenda for September 7?
Right.
Well, we'd still have to look at the, we couldn't schedule it any closer to 20 days. So you'd have to go out 20 days from the date that you initiate the amendment. You can't have, it has to be at least 20 days out.
Well, and here's my thought on the September timeframe. If we miss September, then at that point, I think we pretty much are skating past prime development time. We're heading into late, you know, we're heading into the fall. You know, at that point in time, I don't think, you know, we're going to probably see less interest in plans, you know, heading into October, November timeframe. I mean, who's going to start the project, you know, of that nature in November, you know, November, December? Because that's what we would be looking at in order to apply these requirements. So I would think that if we move this past September, I don't think we're really under the gun to get this on any agenda moving forward. I, you know, I still, it doesn't negate wanting to get this done. But I think that we sure, certainly, I don't think we're under, if we can't get it done by September, then I don't think we should worry about it from a timing standpoint. That's my feeling. What do you think, Heather? You okay with that? I think that's the reason.
Well, just, yeah, keep in mind that the rezone and before it becomes effective could be up to 90 days. So if we have our first public hearing in October, then the trustees have their hearing in, say, November, depending on how the meetings fall and, you know, because luckily they meet twice a month, then it could be effective still by the end of the year, which then everybody would know what the new rules are while they start formulating the projects for 2022. Yeah. So, I mean, I think the timing is okay. Right? I don't want to delay it anymore, but I can get work done.
I think we should strive for an October public hearing on this. For that very reason, Heather just brought it to attention.
And one other thing in regards to the restoration plan. Right now, we have it written that it has to be submitted with the final development plan, but we may want to revisit that. And I'm going to check with Soil and Water because I think you guys would want to know upfront at the time of rezone what their intentions are. Yeah. So I'm thinking that we're going to change that.
Yeah, we should probably consider striking that or amending that, that pervage.
Yeah.
And again, I would refer to Lake County to come up with something, maybe a recommendation on that, where that should be in the mix.
Definitely a preliminary plan, but probably at that required joint meeting that we have between the zoning commission and the trustees as well, that pre-application meeting. I would think that that would be important to have upfront before they move forward with the formal application.
Okay. All right, so you've got your marching orders on that item. Heather, we know what we need to do. Rich, I appreciate your input. Very helpful. Certainly above my pay grade on this stuff. And thanks for producing the document, Heather. It's a very good document. I think it gives us a good guideline to what to follow. Aside from the restoration plan, is there anything else that we need to discuss?
Well, I did review the comments too that we received from, at our meeting last month. And I did add in one other section as a recommendation from one of our residents under the, those that are to be invited to the required pre-application meeting.
Where are we at?
16.28A.
Oh, thank you. I was trying to find it.
Yeah.
Where did I put that? Yes. So under 16.28A, it, in part, it states that the township may also elect to invite representative from Lake County Planning Commission, county engineer. I'm proposing that we also add in Stormwater Management Department and Soil and Water Conservation District as well. So that, to make sure that we invite them because they're important entities that would be beneficial to the township to have them here early on. Again, we have this restoration plan. They would have that, they would be able to give a little feedback on that too, to township and to the developer, if that was applicable, you know? It might not even be applicable, but so I was proposing that we put those in. But other than that, I think, you know, if we could, if you guys want to really, if you wanted to have that discussion on the minimum open space, if we could figure that out tonight, I think that would make it easier. And maybe the last lingering item is the, you know, the components of the restoration plan. Hopefully, I can come back with a strong recommendation from Soil and Water. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the recommendation that we have the required open space to be 30% with the understanding that retention basins are not part of open space. Flat 30%.
Any additional comments to that?
For me?
Yes.
Just that with the retention basins, which is really, even though we don't count it, it's not going to be built there. It is part of a natural environment, even though it's man-made. I think 30% would be enough.
So you're saying 30% and not allowing retention pods or catch bases to be included into that calculation?
Correct. And that's what we say right now. And because some of the ones we've had before did include the retention bases and they were sitting, oh, maybe 40, but if you take them out, they're going to be coming down to, I don't know, who knows what? So if we say, don't include the retention bases or retention pods, we can do it at 30%. I'm open to flip a coin for any other percentage.
I think this recommendation is valid because when you get down to the smaller developments, which could be in the 20-acre area, that might give them an opportunity, save an acre or two from a 40% level, you know? I think 30 is reasonable, assuming there are no retention basins included.
Well, with Hyrum's recommendation and with our current status, that wouldn't be included, so.
Right.
Frank, you have any comments?
I'd like to split the difference very wide. I'm agreeing with you. But the difference in percentage, it's my opinion.
Rich, you like to love?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
This was, this was difficult to analyze for me from the data that Heather had provided us and historical percentages. Then when you look at the historical percentages, which presumably included stormwater retention.
Right.
Presumably. We don't, it wasn't clear to me that did.
No, it wasn't. No, I think we were pretty clear back then that we had included the retention. And that's why we came up and said, we're not going to have that as part of...
Right, so generally, those indicated around 40%.
Yeah.
From the data. And, but then the multiple, I'd say multiple, the density that they obtained, additional sublots over the R1. I was trying to find a ratio that made sense. Because if it wasn't 40, did 40% yield additional sublots of 10%, 15%? Does 30% yield the same? You know what I'm saying? I was, no.
Well...
So anyhow, that's why that, no. No, I, no. Unfortunately, no. So the 40% presumably included it. And from a design perspective, stormwater detention seems to take up 5% to 10% of land area anyway. So, and in consideration of the minimum at that 20 acres, 30% is a reasonable requirement. Excluding, of course, as the text now excludes all water resources from stormwater detention from that calculation, so.
I personally like the sliding scale. That was, I liked that since day one. But the recommendation on the floor from Heather is the possibility, and I don't know how high that possibility is, of a 20 and a 20, and then they, you know, take advantage, you know? Everybody could probably do that if they found the place, the right place to do it. They could probably put two 20s together and make us look like we didn't know what we were doing. So if we want to get rid of the sliding scale, I'd go for the 30% flat.
Frank is proposing 35. As an alternative.
Okay.
All right, Frank?
Yes.
Okay.
But 35 would penalize the smaller developments.
How many developments you think we have left in the town?
Well, I was looking at the zoning map, Frank, and that's hard to tell because there's a lot of open land, but I can't tell by looking at it if it's developable because of the terrain. But...
Especially going this way, you know, we got plains and a lot more yearly land than we do around the western part.
But it's easier to put in a 20-acre RCD and squeeze it in somewhere where there's developable land. So I'd say we probably see more of those than we would big ones.
How big is the one off of...
Canterbury?
Canterwood?
What was the, I forgot the acreage there.
It's just about 34 acres.
44 acres.
That's on the western part of the township.
Yeah, that's true. That's the only one we have in the western part.
If you go to the east or the southeastern component of the township, you're really running into some tough terrain, you know, from a topographical standpoint.
That's our only RCD west of 44.
Yeah, I mean, you look at, you know, just look at Noble Ridge, I think would be a good example. You know, I think, what's the, what's Butterfly and that's...
Nature Preserve.
Nature Preserve. I mean, you look at those, there are some, there are some lots in there that are pretty challenged. You know, and that's, and that's even, that's kind of borderline, you know, in terms of where we're at. You even go further east and it gets worse, not better. So I think we're really limiting, I think we're really cutting the options in a, if you go east in terms of a larger, larger overall project, you know? And I think, again, you know, you run into that pooling of, pooling of resources, you know, grabbing, you know, getting two 20-acre parcels, you know what that's like? You know, the negotiations and something like that, I think really, you know? I think somebody's sitting on a 20-acre parcel and they know that it's going to be critical to a bigger development, they're not going to, they're not going to just hand it over. You know, it's going to be, it's going to get, it's going to get ugly from a negotiation standpoint, so, you know? To pull two big lots together to come up with one development. And then you've got your, you know, you've got your sewer access capabilities, your water access capabilities. Again, that, that's just, those are severe challenges for the eastern, you know, for the eastern part of the township. I mean, even, I mean, even look at, you look at what Rick Colwell's doing over on, by the airport there. You know, it's going to be, that's going to be, you know, his proposal is with septic, right? But then, I guess, do they kind of discourage him?
Their, that preliminary plan, the property that Mr. Lingerfelter is referring to is about a 96-acre site owned by Rick Colwell, Little Mountain Homes. He presented a preliminary plan to Lake County Planning Commission that was going to develop it under R4 using onsite septic. There was a lot of concern from the health department in regards to that. And now they're reevaluating the project and possibly doing a package treatment plan. So, and again, a lot of terrain issues, a lot of water, a lot of wetlands. So I don't know how they're going to develop that yet.
Yeah, that's a big, that, in my opinion, and I could be wrong, but in my opinion, that's probably one of the larger development projects that is available out there right now. And I know, and I had read and heard that they are really starting to frown on the septic solution, you know? Even in R4, you know, they're really wanting to, they're really starting to kind of push everything towards sewer, which I've been a big proponent of for a long time. I've never been a big fan of septic for those very reasons. So, I don't know. Anyway. 30, 35? Rich, can I hear 40?
33.
If we can get the option going.
2 to 1. Well, it's 2 to 1. Again, I really was trying to draw a, some ratio between, for instance, Canterwood, the recent one, I believe it's an R1, it had, was a lot of 56.
56, I think.
56, and then it was 60.
Or 59.
59.
60. It wasn't that...
Yeah.
Big. And they had a, you know, good percentage of open space there. So it's like, I don't want to say we're throwing a dart, but in the end, the outcome, the outcome is, is not that significantly different because you, in terms of the number of building lots at that smaller acreage.
And I hear that Canterwood has to reduce one because the cemetery isn't going to be moved? Is that right? Oh, have you heard that?
The developers of that site have asked the trustees to, they've submitted to me, actually, an amended preliminary plan, which, based on my review, is going to have to go back to the trustees for a public hearing. It was considered a major modification, so that has not happened yet. But they are already looking to amend their approval.
To keep the cemetery.
And they're basing it something on the cemetery, but they're still talking about disinterning the cemetery and moving it. But based on the correspondence to me, they were not, the timing of doing that was up in the air, and so they still wanted to be able to build lots and kind of deal with that as, and not have that hang up, them being able to develop a couple of homes nearby, so.
Who's in the cemetery? Is it their family or is it... Our historical, historical...
Our cemetery section has done some research on it. I, there's a couple headstones with four or five names. I'm sorry, I don't have all the information on, but...
So we don't know whether these might be Confederate soldiers or something?
I don't think there's any historical significance as far as that. But that would be part of what the developer has to do. It's part of their due diligence to disinter that and move that. There's a whole process that they have to go through with Ohio Advice Code, including notifying any, you know, errors or...
Well, the township has basically washed its hands of it, right? They're not, we're not, the township's not going to.
Correct. Correct.
Right.
The trustees have indicated in the past that they were not going to pay or participate in any of that. Sorry, we're getting a little off track from what we're talking about.
Well, thirty, thirty-five.
Here's, here's my thought. As a, as a board, everything we do technically is not cast in concrete, right? It's not carved, so we have the ability to go back, revisit. So if we settle on a number, you know, we can always change it, right?
Yeah, I mean, once you go into public hearing and we get a recommendation from planning, you know, they might have a, something, recommend something different or new information for you to consider or depending on what the public says. You've got that, that ability to approve the tax changes with modifications to anything, you know, that you're proposing to change.
I mean, so, so I don't, I, you know, I, I'm not a big fan of getting into the, into odd numbers. Okay, I, we got thirty, we got thirty-five. I don't want to go to thirty-three or thirty-two and a half.
Those are just.
What's the difference? I understand, but I'm just saying, I mean, I think we should, let's, let's plant a flag on a number.
Yeah.
Okay? And whether we all agree or disagree doesn't matter. We've got five, that's why we have five people here. We take a vote and we decide, and then we have the opportunity to amend that, okay? So we can always revisit, and if we get an outpouring of comments and, and good ideas from the public in the public hearing, we have the ability to make a change, okay? And I think that will, I think that gives us a little peace of mind. Yes or no?
Yeah. Because the biggest thing I think a lot, let's put it this way, we're always trying to encourage developers to use this zoning, conservation zoning. And if we make it too restrictive, they're just gonna stick and develop it the way it's on right now. So we have to give my feel some kind of a carrot, you know? So to make it desirable for them to want to do this for us, it's a win for them and it's gonna be a win for us as a township. So if it's a number, fine, if it's not a number, but we have to do something, I think, that's gonna make it desirable for the developer to do this.
Rich Peterson?
Well, living in an RCD, I'm a fan of RCDs, and I would like to encourage more of those in the future. I like to see preservation of open space. I like to see preservation of trees.
Sure.
That's why I like thirty percent. I don't want to discourage developers from adapting that type of zoning. So I'm with Hiram, thirty is my number.
Okay. Fine. I can move. If thirty sounds reasonable, especially you know a lot about, you know, the work and the development of plan and stuff. So I appreciate your opinion of.
Great.
If that seems to be a number for you, then I'll go along.
I can roll with that. Do you like that? Yeah. Yeah.
All right, very good. So then thirty percent, are we okay with that?
How about if we just?
Oh, Hiram, don't start.
If we put in here thirty percent minimum.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
And that might solve, might get thirty-five, but if you put in minimum, that's it.
All right. We'll add the caveat of minimum, thirty percent minimum. Are we okay with that? See a lot of nodding of heads? I don't see anybody.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Opposed, okay?
Yep.
All right. So let's do thirty percent on the, on the open space requirement. Not including open spaces and stormwater land.
Right, in addition to all the other items we already have listed in there, right, yes, yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. Anything else?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Hiram, please. You're on a roll.
I, well, I don't know. I'm, I'm confused, and I'm sure somebody on the board can, or Heather, can help me out here. On sixteen eighteen, item C, which is.
Wait a minute.
Open space design criteria.
Sixteen eighteen?
Yeah. The bottom portion, item C, subitem B. At the end of it, we say, additional passive recreational opportunities are possible with prior approval that encourage the connection of natural and open space areas provide for scientific research or for restoration activities. My question is, number one, I don't understand. Number two, are we getting too accommodating? Can't we just say, encourage the connection of natural and open space areas, period?
So you're thinking drop, drop the passive recreational opportunities?
Well, and provide scientific research.
So you're saying drop passive recreational opportunities and provide for scientific research?
Well, mine says, I don't know if you're reading from the same set or not. Mine says, additional passive recreational opportunities are possible with prior approval that encourage the connection of natural and open space areas provide for scientific research or for restoration activities. What I, what I think, provide for scientific research or for restoration activities, I think we're getting too accommodating to, you know, throw this out, take your pick. Why don't we just drop that and end the sentence with connection of natural and open space areas? It's, when I read this, I just didn't see the meaning. I, I didn't.
Chairman, I think Hiram has a good point. Heather, was this added, the scientific research?
This was recommended by Soil and Water. And, you know, and just, what we were talking about just previously, prior to this, the restoration. You know, that's something that we want to allow to happen in there, so I would think that we would want to explicitly state that they could do the restoration activity. So if they present that restoration plan, the township would be more good with it, that this would give them the ability to go in there and actually do that.
But that's a separate issue.
It's a separate issue.
Yeah, that's a separate issue altogether, correct? So do we, is it redundant by, by putting it in here again? Because we're already addressing it in the other area under F.
I think Hiram's point is that the subject of the statement is passive recreation. Passive recreation encourages connection of natural. That going to scientific research and restoration has nothing to do with passive recreation, they don't believe. I think that's your point. They don't, it's too elaborate. It goes beyond.
Yeah, that's what.
Passive recreation.
I don't know.
Not, I get what you're saying, okay.
Yeah.
I'm not adamant about it, I'm, I'm just asking a question. Are we getting too accommodating?
I agree.
I agree.
I was not a big fan of the passive recreation in the first place. So. I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't, you won't get any pushback from me on striking that.
Depends on how you define passive recreation, right?
Yeah.
That's, the devil is always in the details. Bird watching?
I think we wanna, you know, allow some use of that open space, you know, with approval by the township to, to potentially create these passive, you know, what could be considered passive recreations, kind of trail through the woods that.
Well, help me. If, if, if we have open space in a development, right? Don't the residents have access? Is there like no trespassing or is there, now, don't the residents have access to that?
They do have access to, but with the, with the, allowing them to create a trail, you might be able to take a look at the open space and say, okay, well, clearing this little path here between all these trees could create a potential connection to, say, there were a budding, like a metro park or something. So the residents that live in that RCD could potentially create a trail that would get them to another location. Just an example. Because the way it's currently written, based on the existing, let's see, hold on. Let's take a look at our definition again of open space here. Because we, we have a specific definition for open space under sixteen point two-four. I know that legal counsel had originally helped us write this. So I don't know, Abby, if you might want to chime in a little bit about, you know, the definition that we're proposing in sixteen point two-four A and what that means as far as potential passive recreation. Can you, can you help us out a little bit?
Where are you, Heather?
Page sixteen seventeen.
Yeah.
That's the bottom of the page. Page sixteen seventeen, not section sixteen seventeen.
Page sixteen seventeen. Sixteen point two-four.
Rich, that was just kind of this other outline, allowing for walking path, minimally invasive recreational activities, things like that.
Well, see, you know, once again, if you read that, if you read B, capital C, section, open space design criteria, and then under B, it says that any designated, any area designated as open space shall be preserved in its natural state for the enjoyment of residents of the proposed development. So there's additional passive recreational opportunities. Isn't that kind of already, would you consider that as a part of the enjoyment of the residents? Or is that what was wanted? Do we have to then define what passive recreational opportunities are?
Maybe if we put in a couple examples, you know, open people's minds. Like you said, bird watching, you know?
I mean, Rich, if a guy shows up in your backyard with a pair of binoculars and he's telling you to bird watch, what do you, you know? What's he really watching, right?
But that is a passive recreational.
But it is, yeah.
That's right.
They do that a lot in Mittermarsh. Mittermarsh does that because they have big trails they put in Mittermarsh ever since it caught fire years ago. Now they have, it's growing up now, it would all be a national purge or coming back and other kinds of animals, you know, coming back. And I was watching public, great TV a couple weeks ago about that. Which I thought, man, it's, it's nice, you know? People are enjoying it. And you consider that passive. That's Mother Nature bringing everything back the way it was. So. Put a couple examples in there, maybe the tech. If we want to go that far. Because that explains.
I go back to Hiram's point.
Take it out altogether.
Abby, do you mind, you know, are we, you know, is the township open to some, you know, we don't allow any kind of use within the open space other than leaving it just as is? Are we subject to any kind of legal implications on that? Or is there any reason why?
No, I mean, that shouldn't be a huge, right, not enough. Except we have some things like that. Like that shouldn't be a problem.
Well, if we're gonna have Soil and Water do an investigation on what Heather just brought in this evening, we can bring that up as another topic to discuss again for clarification.
It's a Tommy Tuffy. Let's go back and talk about thirty percent.
Well, we have five members, and we have five members that have their own interpretation. So, you know, all the best way to address it. Like Harm said, maybe just eliminate it all, take it out altogether, and then we won't have to worry about clarification. And like Andy said, just take it out.
How do we structure that sentence? What's your thoughts? Hiram, do you have a, what do you, how did you say we should make that sentence?
To stop it at connection of natural and open space areas.
So, so you're saying, strike additional passive recreational opportunities are possible with prior approval that encourage the?
No, no, no. No.
Strike is only striking the last line.
Strike, provide for scientific research or for restoration activities.
Ah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you want to leave the passive recreational opportunities intact? I misunderstood you.
Okay.
Which is okay.
And, and I'm not, don't, don't get me wrong. I'm not adamant about this. We can keep the whole thing the way it is.
Don't start backpedaling, I don't.
No, I'm not. I'm just telling you that I didn't understand the need for providing for scientific research or for restoration activities.
Right, I agree.
That just confused me.
Yeah, and I think, and I think the restoration activities is already included under that section under F, whatever the other component was, what was that? Same, same section, six, what is it, sixteen twenty-four F? So, all right? Any further discussion on this? Let's, let's come to a decision, gentlemen. So we're gonna strike provide for scientific research or restoration activities. So you're saying the connection of natural resource and open space areas, period?
Right.
Correct.
Provide for scientific research or restoration activities shall be stricken. Rich, you okay with that?
Yes.
Rich, you okay with this? Frank, you okay with that?
That's fine, sure.
Hiram, we know you're okay with it because it was your idea. How much are you walking it back?
No, correct.
All right, he's not walking back, so we're good. I'm okay with that, too. We still have some hardware with passive recreational, but that's okay.
Heather, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so Heather, we're gonna strike that last part of that sentence.
Okay.
We're gonna drop a period right behind areas and eliminate the rest of that.
Got it.
Okay?
Whenever we say, opportunities are possible with prior approval. Who's approval? Your approval?
Could be homeowners association, because that's who controls it.
Not all ex.
Well, most of them. Who, who controls it otherwise?
Township, as Summerwood.
They do?
Uh-huh.
Ours is homeowners.
Right.
We have a couple developments that are handled by private.
And there's also, and there's a lot of encouragement to land management or land conservancies.
Right.
Things of that nature, too, so.
So it'd be the approval of whoever's in charge, correct? Whoever in particular development. Does that make sense?
I see a can of worms without.
I would think that the township would want to review and approve that.
That comes up a little bit later, too, when you say approval. And my question is, whose?
Yeah. Is it the town, is it during, you know, if it happened, if they, if they plan it at the get-go, you know, when they present the preliminary plan, then it's in essence the trustees that approve it.
Right, yeah.
But, you know, and even at the final development plan, if it's something they planned, it gets approved by the trustees and the... So if it's after the fact and the whole development is already in place and then the homeowners association decides they want to do something like that, it still should be approved by the township. So, um, let me work on that.
Yeah, how are you going to know?
Right. I mean, they'll have to submit some kind of plan that we would then vet with soil and water, you know? And then this is something, additional conversation we can have with soil and water about, you know, how they might assist the township in reviewing some kind of potential plan to do that.
And we've got, there's, I think the verb is with possible.
Yeah.
And prior approval helps us out there. It's not guaranteeing anything. It's basically, you know, giving us an opportunity to have a little bit of direction on that. So I think I'm okay with that.
Well, I'll, actually I can define that a little bit better for you, Brad, so...
Yep.
All right.
Good.
Anything else?
Oh, yes, yeah. I have a few, I'm sorry. I'm going through this again and again and again, and I want to make sure I like it. Next page. We get in here with item E. Any area within the designated open space is to be preserved in its natural states. Any land disturbing activities within the open space shall be previously approved, shall be minimal and restored immediately in accordance with an approved restoration plan. And we're saying that approval is now going to be, in this case, to township. Should we say so? Or is that implied? I would rather have it explicit as opposed to implied.
Where were you at on that, Heimer?
Sixteen, well, page sixteen nineteen.
Yep.
Item echo, E.
Ownership and maintenance?
Any area. Stormwater? No, no. Any area within the designated open space, item E. And we have two approves there. And I just want to note by who?
Oh, that E?
That E.
I was looking at the long E.
I know.
I'm like, why am I not seeing?
Oh, you were looking at the big E.
I was looking at the big E, not the little E.
I should have said the small E.
Well, you didn't.
I did.
All right.
So is that, should we put that in there? Or should we just assume that it's going to be coming back through this office?
Abby, do you think it's necessary that we should say like by the township? Or do you think?
This, or our county. To me, this seems to imply that it means township. But if you want to make it more explicit, no harm with that.
So you want a definition of by whom?
I, I think that's only fair...
I think we say by the township because then on the later section we talk about that this plan would have to be submitted and we were talking about changing it to the, at the preliminary, at least initially, during the preliminary plan.
So then what we want to say is...
Potentially at the final plan, and both those plans are approved by the township.
So we want to say shall be previously approved by the township? Would that make you...
Oh, that would be great if that's what we have to do.
Right. Consular, is that, are we okay with that? All right. So we can say, so then we will, we will add in the sentence, any land disturbing activities within the open space shall be previously approved by the township.
And shall be minimal and restored immediately in accordance with an approved restoration plan, which has already been approved by the township.
Right.
Okay. I'm good?
Next.
Next. Next page.
I knew there was more.
Sixteen twenty. And Rich, you can help me out. Rich Peterson, you can help me out here.
Okay.
Sixteen what?
I'd be glad to.
Sixteen, page sixteen twenty, top of the page. It is strongly desired that the open space is protected with a conservation easement held by a conservation organization, such as, give me one. Do anybody know of one?
Sure.
Okay, give me one.
Western, what's the?
Western Reserve Conservancy.
Western Reserve Conservancy.
Land Bank?
Land Bank.
And they would do something like this?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
That's all I want to know.
Yes.
Because I am not familiar.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's, there are a couple.
Yes.
Okay? I think, I think this is the last one, unless...
You have more?
Yeah. No, no. This is the last one.
Also, Heimer, just to say, another example is I know that some of the developers have been talking with Soil and Water, actually, about holding a conservation easement. So there's potential with the county Soil and Water in addition to Western Reserve Land Conservancy.
Could be a moneymaker for them.
I don't know if they would make money off of it. I mean, they would have to assess some kind of fee for the monitoring of the open space. Which, from the township's perspective, having that annual monitoring would be great. Looking for improvements and things like that.
Last one.
This is the last one?
Sixteen, I think.
This is it?
On, on, on this.
Okay. All right.
RCD.
Promise?
Yeah. Sixteen twenty-two.
Sixteen twenty-two, are we on, are we referencing the page number?
Page number now.
Okay.
Section sixteen point two eight. A one two, oh, man.
I'm with you.
Down in there, you got to put, shall include the following. Location width and so on and so forth. Should we have street layouts in there? That's a question. The second one is school districts. We just had some comments coming through on, what, Canterwood? Because we're servicing two school districts. But they wanted to see the demarcation as to where the school districts were. So maybe if it splits two school districts, we ought to have that on the sketch plan.
Look, I don't, I don't think that's something we require at preliminary plan. Did you check or? I don't think we, yeah, that might, wouldn't hurt.
Should we, should we have street layout on that sketch plan? Right now, I don't see... By the way, yes, I do see. Okay, street layout is in there, item C. And I don't really care if we put in school districts. The one comment came through on Canterwood that said that I don't like it, it's serving two school districts. Well, too bad, that's the way you laid them out, folks. But... I withdraw my comment. It doesn't seem like it's getting too much attention.
I think in the unique sense of a potential school district split, that's not a bad idea.
Well, how would I make an advantage or disadvantage to this type of legislation? What does, what does it mean? Does it mean people are moving in and have to know that? Is this part of the agreement for moving into a development? Which district their kids are going to be going to? Is this something that you have to point out to them? I mean, most parents know where their kids are going to school, don't they?
Well, this section...
I think you would be amazed.
Yes, yes.
Don't assume anything.
Oh, really? Okay. All right. It's just a point of discussion.
Well, I, I think there's some developments where they design lots where the school district boundary is right in the middle of the lot. So then you build a house right in between two different school districts. And that is not the ideal, you know, development. So I, maybe it would eliminate some of that in the future.
Yeah. So Heather has a good point. My second home in Brightwood Lakes, the school district line went through our property. As it turns out, the law is where the master bedroom is located.
Are you serious?
Yes, it is.
No kidding?
Yeah.
No kidding?
Yes.
So where'd they go?
Which is St. Gabriel.
Really?
Private.
Which is neither.
Can you take that off? Right now, St. Gabriel.
Where would they have gone?
Painesville.
Really?
Yeah. Because where my master bedroom, the house wasn't, was split between Mitter and Painesville.
You're kidding.
Same thing happened.
Did you know that?
Yes, yes.
So when you bought the house, you knew that?
Yes, yes. But we, we were raised...
Didn't matter.
It did matter.
Right, but I'm just saying that you knew that.
Yes.
Wow.
Does it also mean you might have two different type of buses coming down the street?
Believe me, that was the issue. We had both buses.
No kidding?
Oh, yeah.
So you had double the traffic picking up kids.
If you miss one, grab the other. No, I...
Okay, one bus went this way and another bus went that way.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Wow.
That point, we'll take it.
We brought it up, I forgot.
And that's something, that's something the realtor is supposed to know when people are buying or selling.
So we want to include schools, school districts in there as we're naming corporate lot, corporation lines, lot track, township, county and state? School district? I mean, it's not that big of a deal to throw those two words in there.
No, not at all.
Right? Wouldn't hurt?
No.
Although I know we probably, well, there are, you know, we know the boundaries. You got Sheridan, you know, you've got...
Yes.
You know, so there are some areas that could be affected by that. So I, I think that's not a bad idea. Okay? All right. Are you done, sir?
With the RCD, yes.
I'm sorry, do we want to stick, where did you want to put that? Just like maybe after corporation lines?
Wherever you're going to move.
Okay, all right, okay.
Wherever you want.
Wherever it's inserted. All right. Anything else, Heimer?
I'm done.
Are you sure?
For now.
With the RCD, yes.
So then you're not done?
There's not much left. It's over here.
All right.
What else we got on your chart?
Anything else? So we're settled at thirty percent. We're settled at the inclusion of Lake County soil and water to come up with some information on the...
I'm going to share some of the information that I received to get their feedback.
For the, for the restoration plan? We're good with that? We're good with adding school districts? We're good with striking a sentence out of the, out of the the line on scientific research? Good with including by the township on the approval? Well, you're like, you bet a thousand there, Heimer. You found a very accommodating board tonight. Good for you.
Money talks.
So we're all good with the changes we've recommended? All right, Heather, you're clear on what needs to be done?
Yes.
Okay, super. Do you have any questions?
No.
Do you have anything that we need to discuss further?
No.
Wow. That's good.
And these points, too, I'll read about, too, right?
Oh, I will update that. I'll update that for next month. Yeah, that was just basically to summarize all the potential changes and getting preparation for a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll modify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so I will consider this the work session for the RCD district over at this point because I don't hear anything else, any other.
Right.
Okay, we're good? All right. All right, moving on to in new business, item number four on the agenda is the approval of minutes by the, of the July sixth, twenty twenty-one zoning commission.
Mr. Chairman, I have one correction, or one, one addition.
Okay, and where, where are we at?
Cover sheet. We ought to have Rich I. Felice as the vice chair.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, that's right.
Nelson reporting. Getting called out. Nobody escapes unscathed. Duly noted. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the July sixth, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes with the one correction noted tonight.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed? No abstentions? We have five ayes, no nays, no abstentions. Minutes are approved. Item number five on the agenda under new business is the correspondence report by zoning commission members. Heimer?
Mr. Chairman, I have none.
Frank?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. I. Felice?
None this evening.
Mr. Peterson?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
I have nothing either. So that strikes number five. Number six, audience participation. Do we have anybody that wants to participate?
Yes, can you hear me? This is Vanessa Pasquet.
Hi, Vanessa. Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful, great, thank you. I appreciate all of the work that you're doing for the RCD changes. I sent a letter on July sixth to everyone and a number of the changes have been discussed. My one big concern regarding this, and I'm bringing this up now while there is, while you're still, you know, having discussions with this because it seems that once you spend all of the time, that the public hearing is, you don't have a whole, you don't have a whole lot of time to review and regroup on some of the stuff. So I'm bringing this up now while you're still having work sessions. And under number one, under open space design criteria, under purpose and then open space criteria, you have heard a lot of discussion in its states that you want to keep everything in the pristine condition and so forth. But yet on, under sixteen point two four, large letter C, small letter D, does any area within the designated open space that is disturbed during construction or otherwise not preserved in its natural state, blah, 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 shall we land stakes with vegetation that is compatible with the natural characteristics of the site? And so that paragraph is in conflict with the purpose and open space design criteria and allows for many things. Now that you've taken out detention tons from the open space, I think that's terrific. But it would still allow, uh, a landowner to timber the, uh, forest or the large trees, cut everything down and still consider it open space. Um, and it allows, would allow other kinds of disturbances as long as they, um, fix it in, in some way as yet to be defined by some restoration plan that the, that county plan and water might provide. So I was wondering, um, how you can, um, modify the, um, the, the, the zoning text so that it would really, um, protect the open space in major ways as opposed to allowing for a lot of the open space to be, um, be destroyed and then fixed in some way? Do you, uh, have any ideas on how you might do that?
What section are you referring to, Vanessa specifically?
So the concerning paragraph is sixteen point two four.
Okay.
Open space design criteria, large letter C, small letter D.
D?
It's E in our copy.
Oh.
Yeah.
Small letter what?
Small E.
E as in elephant.
Echo?
Oh, no, yeah, D, no, D as in dog. Large, we, we thought was on the last version that I had.
Okay, okay.
Let's think of
It's E on ours, definitely.
Significantly. I don't have the latest copy, not online anywhere. So I don't have the latest copy of the proposed text.
So what are we, what are we referencing?
Yeah.
She's saying sixteen oh two, or sixteen oh one, Andy.
Six, yeah, sixteen point two four. Capital letter C as in cat, small letter D as in dog.
Okay, if I'm, if I'm understanding, then you're talking, we're talking about in the, in the newest iteration, the, the small letter E?
Yes.
Small letter D as in dog. Yes, it's hard to hear on this phone line.
She can read it.
It says the land disturbing activity shall be minimal, though.
I think this has already been addressed. I think this has already been, I think that a large part of that has been, has been stricken. And it now reads, "Any area within the designated open space is to be preserved in its natural state, period. Any land disturbing activities within the open space shall be previously approved by the township, comma, shall be minimal, comma, and restored immediately in accordance with an approved restoration plan." Everything after that is stricken.
Excellent. That is, that's really helpful. Um, now, that would, so I, I'm a developer. Would then I timber my land and then come in for an RCD?
"Any area within the designated open space is to be preserved in its natural state." That pretty much answers that question, I would think.
She's saying before they apply for RCD.
Well, if they haven't applied for an RCD, it's inconsequential.
They could do whatever they want with the land.
They can do whatever they want to the property.
They can clear their land. They can timber their land, cut everything down.
Yeah, they could.
And apply for an RCD after that. It's, yeah.
Legally, I don't think you could stop them.
I don't think you could either.
No, because they're doing exactly what's allowed in the current zoning to do with their land.
Oh, I, I, I can't hear what, what's going on in society. Maybe if the phone could be somewhere closer to where everybody is.
Well, basically, the conversation is, uh, Vanessa, that, um, before they make an application for RCD, they have the rights within whatever use of that land to do whatever they want if they want to do it. If they want to timber the property, that's their, that's their, that's their, that's their prerogative to do that. And then if they, after they timber the property, they decide they want to come back with a, uh, with an RCD, then they could do that technically. I mean, you can't stop them from, from doing, you know, whatever it is they want to do on that property prior to making the application. Once the application's made, then the open space to be, is to be preserved in its natural state comes into effect. But until then, you can't overlay this on top of an existing zoning.
Right, and, um, and I, there's nothing that we, I mean, that basically would negate a lot of the reasons to have the RCD in the first place if we're going to timber it, timber it all and take down all the trees and the forest and so forth, right?
We as a board probably wouldn't approve it because it's a muted issue. Because everything is taken down. I, as a member, would not approve.
No.
He'd come in asking for a dent so he can get more lots, smaller lots, I say. You defeated the purpose by already destroying the land.
Unless it was timbered ten years ago.
Well, that'd still be something I'm sure the board would have to take into consideration.
Anything else, Vanessa?
Um, let me just make sure here. Oh, there was discussion during the meeting that, um, talking about other entities that might take over, uh, the, um, open space management. And I know we've talked about this and on the Lake County Planning Commission, we've talked a lot about it. Um, it's very, very, very infrequent that, um, they actually are managed by an entity other than the homeowners association. And as has been discussed by all of you, it is true that, um, over a couple generations of landowner, homeowners and, uh, the homeowners association boards, they don't become as effective in managing the open space. Is there any, um, requirements that you might like to add regarding a third party management of the open space? Such that neighbors aren't, um, you know, having to tell another neighbor that that above ground pool needs to go because it's in the open space and know all of the other problems that happen as well as making sure that the open space is maintained in its pristine condition?
As it reads right now, it says, "Subject to such permanent restrictions as set forth in section sixteen dot two four D above, designated open space areas in a residential conservation development may be owned by an association, a land trust, or other conservation organized, organization recognized by the township." And then in red, underlined, which was an addition, "It is strongly desired that the open space is protected with a conservation easement held by a conservation organization. It shall further be the responsibility of such association, land trust, or organization to ensure that the designated open space is maintained and preserved in its natural state." I think that's pretty comprehensive.
That's great that it's strongly, um, recommended. Can you make it a little stronger than strongly recommended?
I think we're splitting hairs.
You did.
Anything else?
Um, no, that will do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for participating, Vanessa. All right. Anybody else from an audience participation standpoint? Is there anybody else on the line?
No.
Last call.
No. It's-
We're good? All right. Audience participation is now completed. At this point, um, the, uh, agenda has been covered. The next, uh, meeting of the zoning commission will be, uh, Tuesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-one. Any additional information?
Just a comment. Could we, as we decided last month, could we return to one table? Because it's really difficult to talk to Rich's back, and I can't see Hyrum. We agreed last month we were going to do that.
Not seeing Hyrum is not necessarily a bad thing. So I'm, I think that, uh, there's that, you know, what is it? You better watch what you wish for?
It's in the minutes. I'm sorry.
It was.
Right.
Well, do you think, do you think based on what's starting to happen now with, uh, COVID starting to become more aggressive? That, um, or you don't believe?
It doesn't bother me.
You don't believe in that?
No, I'm vaccinated.
Well, so am I.
Don't worry about it.
But now they're, now they're talking.
Then you can sit over here.
Oh, I don't care if there's an infection.
If you want to wear a mask.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I think it would be nice to go back to, uh-
Yeah, it's really difficult to be out here in the-
Sure, sitting at one table. Unless there's, I mean, you know, who knows? Right now, where we're at with, uh, conversations and restrictions coming back potentially, who knows? But I mean, at this point, I would say, I, I agree, I think we should sit at one table. But if it makes anybody uncomfortable, we certainly want to accommodate. We don't want to make anybody feel uncomfortable. That's not the goal. Any other questions, issues or concerns? This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.